So our first question is a very general question, and we're going to start with Ryan Davidson. Just if elected, and I'm going to ask you to hold your answers to two minutes each. But if elected, what are your top three priorities to accomplish as a commissioner? Mr. Davidson?
Well, you know, I got into this race because I believe strongly in limited government, low taxes. And I think one of my main issues is going to be tackling property tax. And that's probably an issue shared by most candidates. Everybody in the Treasure Valley is feeling the effects of growth and expansion. And it's going to be a collaborative effort, so I'm hoping to work with local legislators as well, who, you know, I have a pretty good relationship with a lot of the Republican legislators in the Treasure Valley as a former Ada County Republican Party Chair. Dealing with growth, you know, managing it effectively, but coming up with new and innovative ways to not stifle growth, but to have good growth. And that includes reexamining zoning ordinances. I live in Garden City, and they've been doing some interesting work on new styles of zoning with their Live, Work, Create districts. So I think we need to start examining new innovative ways to redesign cities and our county. I'm also very interested in criminal justice reform. And while I don't have any direct impact over that as county commissioner, we will be working with, you know, the county clerk, magistrate, and district court judges, sheriff. That's a very important issue to me as well.
Great. Diana Laciando, same question.
Thank you. I think we're all having to get used to the mute/unmute part of this. So my top three priorities will be as follows. Continuing to work on the coordinated growth effort that we kicked off in 2018 to ensure that we can preserve and protect the things that we love about this community. Like many of you, I am a native Idahoan, fourth generation, and I want to make sure that this community continues to be a place that we can all love and cherish for future generations. Second, I want to ensure that we are investing in smart, sustainable plans to spend money now so that we don't have to spend money later. And specifically thinking about really our capital facilities needs. They are ever increasing, and we have to have thoughtful plans to make sure that we can address our state mandated obligations in a financially responsible manner. And then I'm very interested in, again, making sure that we can prevent sort of big city challenges before they become our realities here. And I have been proud to lead efforts around a public-private partnership to address family homelessness and the opioid epidemic. And I think, you know, we love Ada County, we love our area. You know, I often hear people say, I don't want it to become California or Portland or Seattle. And so we really have to work hard now to make sure that some of those big city problems don't get over us before we're ready for them.
All right. Thank you. And the same question to you, Rod Beck.
Well, thank you. That is a good question. What are the top three priorities? One of my top priorities is, of course, property taxes. I think that property taxes have skyrocketed too high in Ada County. And I think we need to figure out ways to provide the essential services that government needs to provide to its citizens without ever increasing property taxes. And that's one reason I support the bill that Mike Moyle brought up to freeze property taxes for one year while we address that issue. Because that's a big issue all across the state. In fact, the legislature is even having an interim committee to study and try to figure out ways to ameliorate the ever-increasing burdens of property taxes. That's that would be number one. Number two, I think we need to figure out ways to ameliorate the regulations that impede the building and construction industry. And not just that, but the planning and zoning. Because we have a large demand, as Commissioner Laciando said. We are, Ada County is a great place to live. I want to continue to provide things, provide resources that will continue to make Ada County a great place to live. But the secret has got out, and there's a heavy demand on housing because of all the people moving into here. We can't really control the demand, but we can control the supply. And you need to do things that will increase the supply so that we don't have skyrocketing housing costs. Because that is one of the principal reasons for homelessness and people not being able to live adequately is skyrocketing costs of housing. And we can ameliorate that at the local level. A third area that I'm interested in, really interested in. Okay, is law enforcement and strong enforcement of our laws. I would hate to see us become a Portland or a Seattle.
All right. Bill Rutherford, same question for you. Top three priorities.
My first priority would be to continue what the President Board did this year. When they did the 2021 budget, they focused on controlling their costs and keeping property taxes low. In fact, there's no increase in property taxes this coming year. And they did that without cutting the central services. So I do think you can do both. I mean, they proved that they could do both, and I would certainly support that. The other thing that I think the department is concerned with, based on what I saw on the budget process, was they need to retain and recruit talented people, keep them in the jobs they're in. Basically, Ada County is a service organization, and we need reliable people. We need to keep them safe. I'm concerned about the COVID virus impacting our ability to provide emergency services, sheriff services, run the county jail. So people depend on us for a certain level of service. And I think you can do both. You can provide those services and keep property taxes at bay. I have extensive experience managing large budgets. I'm also a retired civil structural engineer. I know a lot about infrastructure. I know ways to deal with, you know, the rising demand of traffic, the rising demand on land use. And I think with our backgrounds and planning, with what the President Commission is doing, I think they're going in the right direction, looking at land use, looking at impact fees, trying to spread the cost of growth fairly, you know, around the county.
All right. The next question, we'll start with Diana Laciando. The question is, why should voters select you over your opponent? What are the differences, as you see it?
Thank you. I have only been in office for a very short time, as you know. It's a pretty quick turnaround in a two-year term. And I believe that I've proven over the last year and a half that I'm about getting things done. I'm not interested in really advancing a partisan agenda. I'm interested in partnering with people of all political stripes and from all corners of the county to make sure that we can advance the issues that matter most to the people of Ada County. And some of them have been spoken to on this call, whether it's rising property taxes, public safety, how we help our children. Those are things that we can all unite about. And I'm really proud to have worked with Sheriff Bartlett, Clerk McGrane, Treasurer Mon, Prosecutor Bennett. It really doesn't matter to me what political party you're from as long as you're interested in common sense solutions. And I think that's what really distinguishes me in this role.
Great, thank you. Ryan Davidson, same question for you.
Well, I think voters should vote for me because I am a very fiscally conservative and pro-liberty Republican. And I'm going in with the attitude that I'm looking to limit government lower taxes. And I do think political philosophy plays a role in this because I think Republicans and Democrats fundamentally look at government differently. And I'm looking more to protect the citizen's pocketbook and protect their constitutional rights. And I feel that Democrats will expand the size of government and expand taxes because they believe it benefits society. So when I go in, I will have an eye towards cutting excessive budget items and looking for ways to lower the costs of the budget throughout the county. I also will probably take a different approach to dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. I would not have necessarily voted for a mask mandate or some of the severe restrictions that are in place right now because I believe that the economic devastation that's going on right now is not necessarily worth the risk that we're seeing. We've had enough time to see how the virus is playing out in the Treasure Valley. And I think it's time to go back in the other direction. And so that's, I think, one reason people should vote for me is I'm taking a more pragmatic approach.
Great, thank you. Bill Rutherford, the same question for you. Why should voters select you over your opponent?
I don't personally know my opponent very well. I can tell you that I'm not taking any money from construction companies or their executives, developers, corporate PACs, or anybody else that benefits from rapid unchecked growth. I'm going to make best decisions for the people who live here. I'm running to serve residents here. 100% of my contributions are coming from private individuals. I'm a professional, I'm not a partisan person. I don't have experience being a politician in the state legislature or working on a presidential campaign. My experience is managing large budgets, large businesses. I've managed budgets in the $460 million range. I've managed organizations that had 5,000 people or more. I received several national awards from the government for reducing government costs. So I have a track record of making decisions about reducing costs and also maintaining services. I think I can bring that experience to the county commission to serve our residents.
Okay. And Rod Beck, the same question to you.
Okay, well, thank you. I don't know much about my opponent. I know he ran for the legislature once. That's about, that's about all I really know. I do have experience in the legislature, and I think that prepares me to take on the awesome responsibility that goes with the county commission. I was the Majority Leader in the Idaho State Senate when we had 19 Democrats and 23 Republicans. It necessitated me working very diligently with the Democrats and with both parties to construct an agenda that would work for all the citizens of Idaho. And I think I can bring that expertise to the county commission. I know I can work with everybody for the betterment of the community. Now, I don't know, again, I don't know much about Mr. Rutherford other than he just ran for the legislature. But I think I can do a good job based on my experience and my connections with members of the legislature, because that's important in county government, is to have strong associations with members of the legislature, which I do have.
All right. And the next question, we're going to stick with you, Mr. Beck. We'll start with you. And I want to start getting into details beyond philosophical or ideological, but specifically on property taxes and the county's budget. What would you cut? Where would you look, where would you cut specifically from the county budget?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily cut the county budget because I think the county budget needs to be, provide all the essential services that's required by law and that is required for a good community. I think there are some dangers coming up ahead. I mean, for instance, I believe that this year's budget includes about $20 million of federal funds to reduce property taxes. That is true. And the other portion of the reason that we didn't increase the budget much this year is because of Medicaid expansion. And so that was taken off the budget. We didn't need to do that because of Medicaid expansion. So I'm worried about next year's budget because there's, if it's, if it is indeed 20 million, because I don't know the exact figure, I've just, I've heard various ranges of how much the federal money that come from the federal government will reduce our property taxes. But if it's 20 million, then that amount will increase that amount of taxes next year, plus the tax savings that we did have, the 3% growth that is allowed. The commission passed a resolution putting that into foregone taxes, which means next year they can take as much as 6% in the growth of property taxes. So that, I think, could be real problematic. I would just look at really at doing a zero-based budgeting with each department instead of starting out from how much we spent last year and let's add a percentage or so to it. I would, I would ask each department had to do a zero-based budgeting to look at everything that they spend and look at how they spend it. Because I think we do need to provide quality services, but we, I think we can trim the cost.
And Mr. Rutherford, same question to you. How do you, what do you think of the zero-based budgeting option? And how would you approach the county budget?
Well, it's big business. I would approach it the same way that I've approached every big business, really to get into what is the scope of work? What are we actually doing? What do we need to be doing? I would challenge the overhead costs. I'd really look at the county's overhead costs, each department's overhead costs. There's other things that we're providing. And I mean, half of the budget is tax-based, but the other half is service industries. And I would look at the impact fees. We're working on the impact fees for developers as a way to relieve the burden, relieve the property tax burden. And I think that's a fair approach. From what I understand of the process, it seems to be a very fair process. So, you know, developers, I think, need to pay their fair share. And again, I'm not beholding to anybody, the way I'm running. And I would really try to make the best decision for people who live here. I am a negotiator. I love to negotiate. I always try to get a win-win if I can. I believe in negotiating in good faith. So, you know, my, my promise as an Ada County Commissioner would be that I would be fair. I would try to be fair about that whole issue. There's other things that the legislature is doing. You know, they ruled that we had to add more public defenders after a lawsuit. And they tasked the counties to pay for the public defenders. And I think we should ask the state to reconsider that. We should continue the Medicaid expansion. I believe that that is very beneficial to the people who live in Ada County. There are state prisoners that we house for the state. We should make sure we're being reimbursed for that. And there's other things the legislature is working on, you know, such as finding alternate sources for school taxes. Where I live, a third of my taxes are for schools. A third of my taxes are for the city of Meridian. And about 24% of my taxes are for the county. So we can work hard in the county. We can do our job in the county. But if these other two pieces don't work, we're still going to see increases in property taxes across the board.
Great. Ryan Davidson, same question for you. And specifics on cutting, cutting the budget and reducing property taxes. What would you do specifically?
Well, I'm definitely looking forward to getting in office and being able to sit down with the other county officers, most of whom I have a good relationship with already, and really going over the budget line by line and spending a lot of time looking for ways to improve. And it's not necessarily always about cutting. I consider myself an idea person, so I'm usually pretty good at finding innovative ways to save money by using different kind of programs or different solutions that, you know, people who have been in government for a while tend not to rely on the private sector enough, I feel. But just as far as specifics go, I mean, one thing that has always stuck out to me, I saw a previous budget proposal where the court system wants more courtrooms available than what we currently have in the building downtown. And I remember when they built the new county facility years ago, and it was considered to be a massive building. And the thought was that, well, that's where we'll contain all the functions of county government. But of course, government kept expanding and expanding. And then we have several satellite buildings, and the county government keeps expanding that we cannot keep it, even in the satellite buildings that we have. It keeps expanding. As far as, you know, like I said, the court system requiring more courtrooms. Well, to me, that's an easy fix. We can examine things like night court. The county building shuts down around 5 o'clock. All those county courtrooms not being used from 5 to 9 p.m. That would double our capacity right there. And also necessity is the mother invention. So look at how the county is operating right now under the pandemic. Normally, if you get a traffic ticket, you have to go down two separate times to the courthouse, and that ties up a lot of courtrooms. Under the pandemic, the infraction hearings are done by phone or by Zoom. So my question is, if it's good enough to do it by Zoom during the pandemic, why can't we move to that permanently once the pandemic is over? It saves the taxpayers' time, saves them money, and it takes a lot of burden off the space of the court downtown. So those are, those are some of the things I'd be looking at.
Great. Diana Laciando, can you respond to some of those ideas in the budget in general?
Sure. Well, I'm just actually really thrilled to share with you what we've been done, having been in the trenches over the last year and a half. So I'm glad Mr. Davidson brought up COVID and innovation because of anything, I think that's really the silver lining of this pandemic, is that it has torn down some sacred cows that we thought we couldn't get at. And we are learning to do things in drastically different ways, and we are increasing efficiencies and saving money as a result. That being said, county government is unique in that the commissioners are in charge of the budget. They are in charge of the operations. And as it relates to the 4th District Court, we are not in charge in terms of whether there would be night court or Saturday court, et cetera. So it's really about that partnership and making sure that we can have strong relationships to see what might happen. But those are ideas we have been advancing. I'd like to share that in this last budget, we did take 0% in that base, and we're able to do that by what I would call sort of the family holdback, working with all of our departments and offices, cutting training costs, reducing some salary expectations, some IT expenditures. But as has been noted, we are a service organization, and 85% of what we do is mandated by the state. So ultimately, we have to meet certain standards, or as Mr. Rutherford noted, eventually we might become subject of a lawsuit. And that is certainly the case, for example, with our jail, where we had failed our jail inspection four years in a row and are on the precipice of becoming kind of under a federal mandate, similar as has happened in Canyon County. So we really have to continue working on those things, unfortunately, because our costs escalate year over year much faster than the budget ever could. We're seeing a 10% year-over-year increase in construction costs. I'd also like to touch on something that Mr. Beck said about housing supply. I absolutely agree. We have to have our supply meet our demand. But we have to do it in a thoughtful way. And that is really in terms of how we grow. The location of growth can have a very drastic impact on our budget. And I'll give you a great example.
We are going to, we are actually, that is actually the next question. I appreciate that segue. All right. But we are going to start with Mr. Rutherford. So Bill Rutherford, the question to you is, when we are talking about rural versus urban growth, do you believe growth should be limited to the cities? Or is there room for growth in unincorporated Ada County?
Well, the farther, that's a very good question. The farther you get away from the current infrastructure, the more expensive it gets to develop. Of course, the land is generally cheaper. So, you know, I understand the attractiveness of that. I would say in general, I'm not in favor of that unless the developers are willing to cover the costs, the extra costs that's included in that with emergency services, roads, right of ways, et cetera. I mean, you know, it's not free money. Somebody has to pay to pay for all of this. And if the developers aren't willing to pay for it, then it falls back on the homeowners, the property owners in the county, which I don't think is fair. So I really think, looking at impact fees, if they came in and they wanted to negotiate during the development process and they agreed to pay all the additional costs associated with this, you know, that might be something worth talking about. But if they're absolutely against that, I just would not support it in general.
And so looking at developments like Avamore or Hidden Springs, it's an unincorporated Ada County, how would you look upon such development that might come before you?
You're asking me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it would be the same questions. We go through the whole process. What do we have? What's it going to cost to extend the infrastructure to this development? All things, services, physical, physical infrastructure, et cetera. What's the traffic impacts going to be? What's the impact on the water supply going to be, et cetera? You know, you gather all that together. And the question is, if we were building that development where we didn't have to extend all these services, what, you know, how much more are we going to pay in general to do that? And that's where I think the impact fees really have to come in and cover these costs. And if I was negotiating this with a developer, I think they would have to show me, you know, where is the win for the people who live in Ada County? What's the win for them? What are they going to get out of this? And if they couldn't make a convincing argument, I just wouldn't be supporting it.
Okay. Mr. Beck, same question for you. Allowing of development in unincorporated Ada County.
Well, I don't think it's a, it's a, it's a problem to have development in unincorporated Ada County, providing that the developer provides all the services that would be needed to accommodate that development. Obviously, if you're going to be way out in an area where there's not sewer availability, it would be incumbent upon that developer to provide the sewer services. If there's traffic impacts, it would be upon that developer to provide the traffic impacts, to widen the roads and do the things that would be beneficial so that there wouldn't be a burden on the Ada County taxpayers. I think a good example, one that just, of a project that was just improved, was the Brighton Corporation out in Meridian have, just approved. Meridian was really reluctant to approve new developments because of the costs of the infrastructure and the services that was required. Brighton Corporation come up with, I thought, a very good idea. They, they're providing, it's a large project, and they're providing, they're going to build a roundabout, they're going to do all kinds of things to provide the services so that it won't impact the cities. I think the larger developments like that, developers can provide those services, and it should be incumbent upon them to provide those services to their community so that the other property taxpayers do not have a large burden. And that will increase the supply because I'm glad Commissioner Laciando agrees with me. We need to increase the supply of housing in Ada County so that we don't have skyrocketing housing costs like we have had.
And Diana Laciando, the same question for you.
So thanks. I'll pick up on that. And I do agree, we need to increase the supply. But I'll reiterate that it has to do with the timing and location of that growth and really coming back to taking a hard look and running the numbers on the fiscal analysis of whether it's going to pay for itself. And it's not just the first cost. It's not just the capital infrastructure cost. The hard nut to crack is the ongoing operations and maintenance. And I'll give you a great example. So Hidden Springs was built out more than 20 years ago. And as a part of that, the developer built a fire station. To this day, it's unmanned. And it's because the North Ada County Fire District, which is a separate fire district, is at their levy cap. And they simply have no ability to pay for the people who would actually staff that place. I get a call about it about once a week from folks who don't understand why they don't have what they consider to be the appropriate level of service in that neighborhood. And I can tell you, they sure aren't happy with my answer, which is that I don't have, I don't really have a great ability to affect that. So we really have to get at these root causes. We have to understand what the long-term impacts of certain types of development are going to be before we ever zone for them or build them out. I'll give you another great example that we're currently grappling with, with some development proposals that had been proposed in southwest Ada County area. That development was 20 minutes away from any of our paramedic stations. Now, if you're familiar with EMS, you know that for stroke or heart attack, it needs to be eight minutes or less. The only way that we could have improved that level of service was to spend $2 million on a new station, $250,000 on a new ambulance. And then the ongoing challenge becomes, how do we staff it? And so that is why we have worked tirelessly with our cities, across the six cities, with ACHD to run the numbers on proposed development. We're working with Compass so that we can get a better handle on this long term.
All right. And Ryan Davidson, same question for you.
Well, you know, certainly, we're becoming a victim of our own success in Idaho as one of the fastest-growing states in the country. And everybody knows what the problem is. The California real estate market is way hotter than ours. And so if you sell your average house in California, you have enough money to come buy a much nicer house in Ada County. And regular residents are just getting priced out of the market, and property taxes keep going up, and the supply of houses is dwindling. And a lot of, you know, what Ada County calls affordable housing is really not that affordable. But I definitely think we need to start looking at reducing restrictive regulations and taxes and fees that make development so expensive that people in Ada, people in Ada County can't that people in Ada, people in Ada County can't afford it. And so I do support developments outside of the municipal boundaries. I do think developers need to pay for some of the services that are gonna be out there, but developers shouldn't be looked at as just an unlimited supply of money for infrastructure, because that will get passed on to the homeowners, and it will only drive the cost of homes up. So I think we, you know, there are certainly challenges with Hidden Springs and being able to pay for services. I think we should make it easier for people to volunteer. There's a lot of volunteer fire departments around the country. Make it easier for the residents of Hidden Springs to man their own fire department on a volunteer basis. We can find new ways to develop and organize cities where people don't have to drive across county to get groceries or go to Home Depot or stuff like that. So I think we, you know, I believe that the Democrats, they have the best, best intentions, but generally, their policies will lead to increase in housing costs, which will drive away the locals in favor for people from out of town who can afford it.
And we're gonna dig, dig down a little deeper on this subject, but we're gonna stick with you to start, Ryan Davidson. The county is currently working on a fiscal impact analysis tool that will show how our current style of growth is affecting the county and various cities' infrastructure needs. Depending on the results of this study, would you be willing to implement policy that could potentially limit growth, such as an adequate facilities ordinance or increased development fees?
Well, I would certainly take.
Impact fees, impact fee.
Impact fee, yeah. And of course, I would take the results of the study very seriously and give it a very good examination. But, you know, I would resist passing the, the costs onto the taxpayers as much as I could. But when we, when we get to the level where rate, rising impact fees are necessary, that's certainly something I would consider.
Okay. And Diana LaCiando, same question for you.
Thank you. So immediately upon taking office, I started the process of asking about the county's history with impact fees and what our likelihood of being able to implement them would be. We, the county has been allowed to assess impact fees for a number of years, but had not chosen to walk down that path. And it is a somewhat arduous path. It is outlined in state code how you have to do it. But we're at a point now where, as many of you have noted, our property taxpayers are very frustrated, and they're frustrated with feeling like they're continuing to shoulder the bill for all the new folks who are moving here. And so we have to have some kind of balance there. This isn't something we can do alone. Again, I've had meetings with all six cities multiple times to talk through what our plans are. We need them to sign on. All six cities will have to pass an ordinance to allow us to assess county-level impact fees. But we've had great conversations, and they're all very supportive because they understand that the existing residents, your seniors on fixed incomes, cannot continue to shoulder the burden for new people who are moving here.
And what are some of those things that an impact fee would be used for at the county level?
Sure, so you've sort of heard our tales of woe specifically around our coroner's office and our jail. Currently in Idaho, impact fees can only be utilized for specific things, such as public safety and parks. In our case, we have realized that it's not currently allowed in state statutes to utilize them for EMS. So that's actually something that we will be looking at with Idaho Legislature this year. We couldn't even do that right now if we wanted to. So we're specifically looking at the coroner's office and the jail in assessing a countywide impact fee for those services. You know, I don't want to belabor it too much, but we're in a really kind of terrible situation right now with our coroner's office and the growth that we've been experiencing. It's not great for our families and very much not a great situation for our staff who work in that facility.
And Rod Beck, same question for you regarding the possibility of implementing policies that could potentially limit growth, such as inadequate facilities ordinance and even impact fees.
Well, I'm not familiar with that study. I would really like to take a look at the, at the parameters of the study and so forth. And of course, I was in the legislature when impact fees were actually authorized. And they did have really strong sideboards because they didn't want impact fees to be used for expansion of government. They wanted to have specific impacts or to use the, the money for specific areas that, that did impact those areas, the, the cost of growth. And so, and I do know now that some of the impact fees are being diverted to other sources, I believe. And so I'm not sure about, about impact fees for the areas that, that Commissioner LaCiando talked about, because I'm not sure how you would actually assess a cost on a house in, in, in one area that, that doesn't have anything to do with the coroner or the, or the jail. That would be a really delicate balance to have to be, to have to look at. And I wouldn't want to put additional burdens, because when you assess impact fees, there is a, an impact of that, and that is the affordability of housing. And so you really have to look at the entire picture. Now, of course, I do, I have supported impact fees in the past. I still support impact fees, but I think that it has to be a delicate balance so that it doesn't negatively impact the supply of housing.
And Bill Rutherford, same question for you.
One of the things I haven't heard mentioned is high-density housing. Where I live in Meridian, we actually live in a high-density, single-family development. You can put more houses on the same acreage, really, and not lose a whole lot. I would like to see that become a practice, that the new developments look at high-density housing. It's a way to lower the cost of the housing because you're using less land. We live, I think we live on an eighth of an acre instead of a quarter of an acre. That lends affordability to the homes. So there's other ways to come at this affordability of homes issue. And I think I've pretty much covered what I thought about impact fees pretty well. One thing about the impact fee process, though, is that it is, it is pretty fair. They call for an advisory council to be formed, and the membership of the advisory council has to be at least two people from the realtor development area, and there has to be a finance person on that council. So this advisory council really is made up from, you know, a good variety of people. And I think the commissioners would receive a cross-section of information. It would be, it would include business communities. Right now, the impact fees that I've seen on, on the county site that are being considered is EMS, the sheriff's department, the jail, and waterways and park, water and parkways. So I think it's a fair process. I mean, that's about the best you can do with this is to be fair. So I do think they would take into consideration everybody's point of view. And as a person who likes to negotiate, I think I would want that information. I would want to know, you know, who's winning out of this, who's losing out of this, and try to get to a win-win here with, with the developers, if we could.
All right. The next question, we're gonna start with Diana LaCiando, and we are going to hopefully talk about development on the fairgrounds and around Expo Idaho. I know this is kind of a pending issue, but maybe you could give us your, your, your general thoughts on development on the Expo Idaho grounds and the fairgrounds.
Sure. Well, as many people as there are in Ada County, there are as many opinions about the fairgrounds. And I can tell you, even before taking office in 2018, once the prior ballot initiative failed, I had gobs of people sending me all kinds of ideas, including my now-third grader, who has very strong ideas. He would like it to be a water park. And ultimately, we were getting so many ideas from a cross-section of the community because that site where horse racing was taking place was no longer in play for horse racing. We determined that it was not the best course of action for a group of three commissioners to sit in the courthouse and come up with our own ideas. We felt like we needed to create a very robust, transparent process to understand the property, to understand the obligations, to understand the history, and to really bring a variety of stakeholders together. So that's why we brought together the Fairgrounds Advisory Committee to understand all of those things, create some scenarios, vet them with the public, and ultimately bring them to the commissioners. Now, obviously, anyone can share any idea they might have, and they have shared them, some of them very publicly, as you've seen with, with renderings in the paper. And the only concern that I have had about that is that in some ways, it almost looks like a done deal to the community, and that really couldn't be further from the truth. They are not further ahead or further behind any other idea that is currently being considered. So this is when I get to deploy some of my, my favorite puns. I do not have a horse in this race. And ultimately, what is important to me is that we have a very transparent, open process, because this is a public property, and it deserves the public's interest as we move forward.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davidson, where do you stand on development of the fairgrounds?
Well, I, I support the committee, and I think that we need as broad input on the future of that space as we can get. So I really do appreciate them opening it up to input from everyone in Ada County, because I think working together will find the best solution, because it's, it's gonna change the character of Ada County for the foreseeable future, whatever goes there, as well as Garden City. I think we need to work closely with Garden City, who may have some ideas on that as well. The fairgrounds is actually in my precinct, so I drive by it every day. And I, it's depressing out there. The LeBlanc Horse Track has just gone into disrepair. It's kind of a ghost town. There's so many great things we could be doing with that entire area. I'm a little bit skeptical of taxpayer-funded baseball stadiums, especially in light of the citizens of Boise passing the ballot initiatives, disapproving, spending tax dollars on stadium projects. And if you look across the country, taxpayer-funded stadiums for football or baseball generally are not a good investment for the taxpayers. It sort of puts you at the mercy of the, the teams who can threaten to leave for a better deal. And so I just want to be very cautious about using taxpayer dollars to develop, you know, private stadiums. Otherwise, it's not completely off the table if, if there's a great proposal that looks like it'll be beneficial for the people of Ada County. But I'm looking forward to reading the final work product and, of the committee and engaging in some of the ideas myself.
So you're open to, to development? You're not necessarily firm in a position of keeping that, keeping open space on that, that property?
I don't think we necessarily need open space. I mean, I am, in general, at the moment, in favor of keeping the fairgrounds where it is. I think, you know, that's something that brings about, what, two hundred and fifty thousand people a year into Garden City. And I'd like, I'd like the cities and the counties to collaborate on ways to, you know, keep those people there once they, once they leave the fair. You know, when I ran for Garden City Council over a decade ago, one of my proposals was a development of a Garden City downtown, which would surround the fairgrounds as, you know, an economic incentive for Garden City. So we've got thousands of people going to the fair. Can't we keep them in Garden City and, you know, have the surrounding businesses be able to profit by all these people coming into, into our neighborhood? You know, you had other, other candidates at that time who thought they should tear down the fairgrounds and Hawk Stadiums, put the Garden City downtown there. You know, those, none of those ideas really came to pass. But I think we just, you know, we do, we obviously need to improve traffic during Western Idaho Fair. You know, it tends to clog up, you know, the main arteries going in and out of Garden City. But, yeah, I, I would say right now, we keep the fairgrounds and develop around it or even reposition them, but I'm certainly open to all ideas.
Okay. Mr. Rutherford, same question for you, development on the fairgrounds space.
I, I'm a hiker. I love to go hiking. One of the reasons we moved here was because of the hiking. I put a lot of stock in open space. I, you know, you can, you can build every square inch of ground that there is, or you can decide that there's other uses that override having a profit made here. And I think it's interesting to, to talk to the voters and ask them, you know, it's a value system issue. It's, I don't know that that is in yet. I don't know if those, those opinions are counted in yet. The developers are certain, taking their step, and they've thrown something out there. I'd call it more of a conceptual idea. There is a public process that is to be followed, and I certainly support that process. But I'd be looking at, you know, what is the value of the open space? I mean, sometimes it's not that tangible, certainly not a money thing sometimes. So I kind of lean towards, you know, do we really have to build every square foot out? Do we really have to develop every inch? And I, and I guess I'd want people to weigh in on that, you know, what's really important to the people who live in that area, who have to deal with the traffic every day, who have to deal with the impacts on their, on their infrastructure. I don't live there. I live in the city of Meridian, so it's not gonna impact my life day in, day out. So I'd really be concerned with what, with what they think, because it's basically their community. And I think we should give that a lot of weight at our level.
All right, thank you. Mr. Beck, what's your position on the development of the fairgrounds?
Well, it is the responsibility of the Ada County Commission to take care of and to manage all the properties that the, that is owned by Ada County. And that is one of the properties that's owned by Ada County. So it's a legitimate discussion to have. And it's, I'm one that favors keeping the fairgrounds, keeping the fair there. However, if there's a better idea, I wouldn't mind taking a look at it. I, I think that the public process, as long as it's transparent and there's no, no secret meetings behind closed doors going on, if there's a transparent public process where all proposals can be rendered. I do think it was interesting that the Alquist Ball Ventures proposed the, that baseball stadium and made it look like it was kind of a done deal when it's just one of the proposals. And, and they, and they need G-Bad money. They openly say that. They need millions of dollars that G-Bad will put together to help fund the stadium. I don't think that's a very good idea either. And I don't think the citizens of this community, when, when they wanted, when Mayor Abider wanted to spend millions, a hundred million dollars on a library and a big downtown stadium, voters took up arms on that and didn't like it. And so I don't think we should, we should be doing that. But we should look at all proposals, and I would be open to look at every proposal that they come in. I do think it's a legitimate and a good process that, that the commission has put together for consideration of, of what could be used with that vacant, vacant property, the form of racetrack. I don't think we're gonna get racing back in, in the community. I know there's a lot of people that support it, but I don't think it's coming back. And so if there's a use that we can put that property to, I, I take serious consideration for that use.
Okay. All right. I did have one more question. We are gonna start with Rod Beck. Would you support increasing funding for the sheriff's office, cutting funding for the sheriff's office, or keeping it about the same?
Well, that is a good question, because a big part of the Ada County budget is for law enforcement. And of course, I do support law enforcement. I want a safe community for us. And so I'd have to take, I don't know what the increasing budget would be for. I'd have to take a look at what's it for? Why would you want to increase the budget? I do think we, if we have a pending lawsuit, we need to make sure that the jail is adequately provided for so that we don't have to worry about federal lawsuits to force us to do certain things. We should keep up on that. And so I'd have to take a look at what increasing funding would be for. I don't know. I'd have to take a look at it. I think that Sheriff Bartlet's doing a great job. I just talked to him last night, and he said that they've had a really hectic week because of the different issues that have come up. But law enforcement is really important, and I want to keep a safe community. So whatever it takes to keep a safe community, that's where I'm gonna be.
All right, Mr. Rutherford, what's your position on budget for the sheriff's department?
I believe you're muted.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
The sheriff's office is, is, could benefit from the impact fees we were discussing. The sheriff's office is, is, could benefit from the impact fees we were discussing. They also are impacted by growth. The more we extend their reach, the more we ask them to patrol, the farther they have to go out, you know, this, this costs extra people. It certainly impacts our schedule. The other thing that's going to impact them is, is this virus. You know, on a daily basis, they're exposed to this virus and it's pretty tough to predict how that's going to affect them. I mean, if, if officers have to go offline because they're not well or they have to be quarantined, I mean, you need some kind of reserve there to deal with that. And I think the longer this pandemic goes on, I think it's going to affect all of these first responders in the same way. Our ambulance people, county budget, there's people that work in the county jail that, you know, they're not the law enforcement people. They're maintenance people. They take care of the jail. They, they do the day-to-day work in the jail and, and they're also subject to this virus. So that's a tough question. I, I think realistically, we should have some reserve in there. We should have some way to back these people up if they do become sick. We can't just say we're going to close the jail because everybody had, you know, it's half our workforce was, comes down with the coronavirus. So that's, that's an area where I think contingency funding is necessary, especially in today's climate with this virus. So that would be my answer. I, if, if it was an unknown and I couldn't put a number on it, I would err on the side of having a larger budget rather than a smaller budget, just so we could meet our, our legal obligations in the jail and meet our obligations to protect people.
Okay. Mr. Davidson, sheriff's budget?
Well, I, you know, as the Ada County Republican Chairman, I'm friends with our Ada County Republican Sheriff, Steve Bartlett, and I think he's doing a great job. And so we already have a pre-existing relationship and I'll be happy to sit down with him and go over the sheriff's budget, you know, as much as we can to see what's there. You know, obviously, I would defer to his expertise in law enforcement of knowing what the citizens of Ada County are needing. And if, if we do need more money, you know, he'd be the best resource for me to go to to, to see what the additional needs are. Certainly, we have to meet our constitutional obligations to have a jail that's adequately staffed and, you know, not going to violate prisoners' constitutional rights. And so if we have to spend more money on that as well, that's something I, you know, will definitely look into because, again, I, I'm very interested in criminal justice reform and making sure that we have facilities that are constitutionally adequate is important to me. Overall, I'm a big supporter of the sheriff and local law enforcement and I think that leads to the quality of life in Ada County, that we have such a low overall crime rate. And again, that's not just because of law enforcement, that's because of the, the people and people who coming to the state want a better quality of life and we attract great people here. So I don't think we need to dramatically expand the budget because, you know, Ada County is, you know, it's not Portland, it's not Seattle.
Okay. And Diana LaCiando, the, the sheriff's budget, what's the, the state of the sheriff's budget and how would you proceed going forward?
Thank you. So the sheriff's art, office constitutes the largest expenditures for Ada County and that's because it does constitute our jail diversion programs as well as patrol services. And I've been working on this issue before it really became kind of a national talking point. And that is, it's really not an either or, it's a both and. How can we meet our constitutional obligations while ensuring that we're getting at some of the root causes of these issues? It's really at the heart of why I ran for this position in the first place. It's why I devoted myself to making sure that we have adequate mental health and addiction treatment services. It's why I partnered with the sheriff to be on his team for the Safety and Justice Challenge Grant before I even considered running for this position. It's why I have voted, even though it's been tough decisions around property taxes, to increase funding so that we can expand the jail and not fail on our jail inspections. But at the same time, I have supported creating a community transition center, which is a place where people can get out of the regular hard walls of the jail. They stay there overnight, but they can either be out working, doing job search or education. So it's really multifaceted. It is not an either-or conversation as much as some people would like to make it that way. It is nuanced, it is challenging, and it requires really diligent partnership as well as data analysis to make sure we're doing the right thing.